All right, this is final one that I will call August meeting of the city of the district. Thank you to all of the K R B members that are in person as far as online. We appreciate your interest and we'll be seeing you next week. The expecting the opportunity is that all participants and attendees will conduct themselves professionally and with respect for the first of our few. That means that our motion to do the agenda. Both by General, second by Tricia, in discussion. All those who came to see my best AI. I, although it's close inside. Motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is recognition of visitors in public forum. And I will read the description of this note to you. Before we start, this is an opportunity for members of the state district to address the board. There was portion of the meeting of the board and the announcement of the effects, but the board will not respond to questions. Since this is the board to conduct the business. This portion will be going on the next week for a job over thirty minutes. Speakers and visitor speakers are asked to come and ask about more than three minutes. I'm interested in making respect for a model in public forums because I expected to demonstrate the question of something that really matters in a special matter. Over there, you can still attach, you know, it's a point like that on staff, students value or the same. I love the committee. And that wants to get to that, and that is clear.
Is the little timer off from? One of us is, yeah, yeah, it's fine. Well, that's for me. Oh, I didn't see that when I heard. Let me know when it's up thirty seconds. Do your best to be a floor. All right. My name is Peter Wilson, Sartar, Minnesota. I did want to issue a compliment. I was with the seven forty-two event, the five hour that let's use the term debacle that they had it over there. And I would have to say their level of censorship is far worse in there. And also have to say that they're probably the target here. When you look at them, their entire, maybe not their entire, a high percentage of their time was spent with study, foolishness, comments about this and that and violence. And basically, it was almost nothing about true education. It was kind of a disgraceful example of when they go down the wrong path, you focus on things that aren't relevant. Anyway, with good fortune, that will change over there, but you are far better than they are. And that's accepted, but it's certainly an accurate comment. Another thing is their level of censorship over there, their censorship was basically my entire comment. Or anyone else's are totally cut out. I always believed if you can, if you can't handle the heat, stay out of the kitchen. Here you should be showing the visual thing along with audio. That may have changed, and so I apologize for not having been aware of it. But if your student, my understanding is part of this was brought up, a brother regarding are unsafe in your schools by coming up here and making comments, then you have a unsafe school improperly managed or a bad environment. But those all need to look at it and/or people need to be locked out the door. They don't need to be isolated. Another thing is if things tend to be operating with a bias of normality, assumption of consistency, the things will continue to fall. And I would hope that going forward, there is a, again, an understanding that nothing is constant. And I'm not sure that I can keep that in all cases as this goes forward. Again, I look at my dog. He has a pattern of culture also. I remember I spilled another dog treats under my car and dog got a soft spot of the few I didn't get crawl under in his bracket. He continued that pattern for about two weeks. I'm going to be confident that there were always treats under it. And that's where we have to alter the way we're doing things here in this district. So that we actually talk about education, not indoctrination, not the fear of what is going to happen. You have superior management at the school level to avoid. Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is. And. All discussion, open for questions. All right. We have all those. I, all those opposed, the time. Okay, motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is reports. And I first think. Rule is super. As you look forward to starting the school year around these areas. Since our last meeting, I. Conference was very well. Conference content was excellent. I've learned several education. Super excited, we held our first, what will be many, working instructional meetings on the second, third. We had a huge success, and roughly forty-five people there was all the surprise faces and extraters. First, the event was to chart a light of course as a recent instruction. Hope this were foundational for the project. And personal consciousness. Always, and our. We'll put together the main professional purposes. Feedback, promoting correctly positive. Our sergeant coach will be home professional learning last year, the leadership role to call. They also engage using teacher mentoring. Everything teacher enter onboarding for the classroom and teaching. I also have the opportunity to have the midway partner for students success to kill the school education foundation for me. Excellent meeting, supporting the most recent activities for us to do. At that, the bill, and as one of the areas I shared a little bit about the graphics to do for the process. Unfortunately. I presented at buildings as well. And it's a full loan positive. I think how it's most reliable and structured of the network. I appreciate the board. People, the process, the path of the teaching plan process. For the. Original new family that we have, um, generally. I mean, thinking specialist here, I'm working with those, it's been in person. For videos that's I mean, I, um, we move through our website and push out the videos remain live. They're sort of unmanned, if you will, from easily test the role they're heard and do I S D. Also, you know, link included, so families can might answer your question more quickly than efficient. As a reminder, the position of school will be different for all the kids this fall. And we're going to be able to say what we want. I'm excited you're going to get work here, asking why it's like forty-five tests. Maybe this can show the, sorry, it's here for the. Also happy to report that we have certificate dates for our deep point first curriculars back to you. Seven three to three for current member. Funding for the retreat. Yeah. But yeah, we visit with the local mining support leaders recently, and we work again to raise funds for their inclusive play. I've shared this before, and we need to be aware of this, it's not a school project, so we need to know. It's all made awareness, and fundraising is one of the goals. And the one is anticipate. Planning for the September twenty-sixth event at high school is ongoing. Private sponsors have been secured. City has not been in the event. And we were tenfold, but our staff is. We tend, and it's all that is ready to be ready. We will continue with the other thing planned for shortly. I just want to make this kind of. To welcome back our colleagues, um, coaches, and students. A room range five E twelve, we're watching a couple of things, which is a children's childhood, which has been going into censorship. Some associated factors, personally, particularly, um, for a safe for the preschool. We'll make these numbers of years to be sure that. That has a staff members and we'll also be looking at the safety. Another piece of looking at is. It's for processing table for any events that's still coming in. And last but not least, are we ready to?
Yep.
I'm looking for a new, uh, daily time, who is in a rising, which is our first out waste. It was a work on the extension project to Johns Hopkins University. Really is passionate, well, especially patient, makes one from the cover neurodiversity. This term of procedure is a challenging challenge. As part of Kaylee's project, she's passing for second half of an audience. And after visiting that option, we really are honored to present. I made an important question. Her presentation will be your screen. Kaylee, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Okay. All right. Hello, my name is Kaylee, and I'm here today to tell you about neurodiversity, which is a form of special education, but one that I like to emphasize on. Before I continue further, I would like to go over a few basic definitions. So what is neurotypical? The basic definition for neurotypical is people.
Kaylee.
Yeah.
Kaylee, hold on just a second. We're going to try getting the volume to go through the TV.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
All right.
Sorry.
My name is Kaylee, I'm here today to tell you about neurodiversity, which is a form of special education, but one that I like to emphasize on. If I continue further, I would like to go over a few basic definitions. What is neurotypical? Basic definition for neurotypical is.
Kaylee. Yeah, Kaylee, hold on just a second.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
So I will, my name is Kaylee, I'm here today. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Hello, my name is Kaylee, and I'm here today to tell you about neurodiversity, which is a form of special education, but one that I would like to emphasize on. Before I continue further, I would like to go over a few basic definitions. So what is neurotypical? The basic definition is people who don't have neurodiverse differences. Oh, it's all good. I don't think it's.
Okay. Hello, my name is Kaylee, I'm here today to tell you about. I'm going to have my shot.
The July, all the financial report is posted on the agenda, so this is the monthly date, um, the date. This year is. Also, we're seeing tracking very similarly in the debt service fund, you'll notice quite a significant difference. And that is mostly due to the only major that we now remaining is for our main high school. Uh, bond ratio from this first. The Dallas High School contract of sixteen. So there is a lower interest payment overall in July, things are maybe ended July, end of January. And then because the other bonds fall off, that's when the debt schedule increases. On the principal payments for these, so in January, that all catch back up, our day, our six January, it ended to be significantly bigger than it was last year. Are definitely the same. So that looks a little bunch, that's why. Um, this is time of year, we're starting to, we're heavily involved in both school years, kind of operationally. We're, we're planning for the next school year and staffing up for that. With all our departments, food services close to full staff, our facility full, department is now fully staffed. Um, we're trying to hire some more transportation, so we hired one of the driver, we got a couple more. There. We're also on the finance side, um, wrapping up a lot of last years, starting to prepare for the audit. The audit will, will take place in late September. And the audit report will likely be out. So we're, we're starting to prepare for that and also starting a couple of new people at the same time. Summer, we hired, basically, the other started last week, yes, and we also have. HR, so between the two of them, we've got two people starting in the district office. So a lot of training on our processes and procedures to get people up to speed. So it's been a busy summer, and we're glad to have people in place now. Next, next month will also bring the preliminary let me approval. Right now, we're in the phase where the inputs for that are all have been submitted to. They put out the initial, let me go on, I believe, on September eighth. Ask for approval of the initial levy at the September four meeting at maximum. And then I'll have the numbers for that. Really, nothing legislature would have drastically changed.
All right, third item on the report is small board review reports. As we please, that's definitely the. Um, one, not, uh, so many, so many people. Uh, we have. Good session. Uh, we're at, so we use the process right now. And I had a choice at this time, October, so. So that puts off that, um, that process. Um, get it under, and admit it outside, could raise funds to that, and the other. Initially, the desires to put that so in the future to hopefully. But it's still like, um, but. This is what we have to see, this is exactly what we, it goes back to this. Time for that, we know the process, and it was the one that we built is the right, so we could not. But that was that, that's this important question.
What's it possible to do in this much? Right.
We, we are not, we don't let down, we are looking at something, you know, do you still have, you get set aside the million dollars to. On these things, so that will be as. Coming to say. Pretty close. Something we've done out there. But whatever was done, not to make temporary, uh, there might be, there could be the possibility to cover it. Anything that we build altogether, we can go towards the larger. Just wanted to really try to design. What, what, the, 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 the. What do you think? What does that sign, or the serving possibility of being some type of interest? Very friendly, a base tool. The policy that is. Uh, the other one, my agenda is. Something I'm really impressed. You, how to better work with, uh. You, um, one of the things. You can do well, stories, things happening, uh, in the TV, uh, Sarah, what's our, our, you can be, especially as a great job and works for the price of using the number of hours you can use. Hope, um, we've got a great number of change, that's our, um, for the calendar, it's like, I don't know, let's see the things. And extended shows, we do, we did last, we've been talking about this for a while, I remember, we need to, uh, we look at it, it's a whole, it's help. People, that was, we have decided to work with quite a lot of smart. Please. Let's. Started to keep me, uh, I think. And we have. And we have. Yep. I guess it almost. What the outcomes. Yeah. Up front, the, up front, some of the. So in the, these, these are. Um, so upfront, a lot of that is something available to get all their principal, we need to work against this. Uh, these help, uh, maybe a bit of a kind of helping you mark. And she's like, she's part-time.
Yeah.
And she wants to, and yeah, she's done a great job of, yes, she's helping you with, and we take her for more.
You want, you want.
Um. And here's just, I can't, this is all. He's working very well. You know. You know, there are two of these. Policy, we would not. So exactly, I'm asking you. That's really one more. Also, the regular instruction of assessment here is. Taking off their four minutes scheduled for this coming school year in April. Um, and I will. I will not be able to thank you for something. I see a few. It's something, no. I'm only saying I'm a, we allow not to be a student, and you're, oh, excellent. The expenses to get a, I mean, I'm mentioning, yeah, standing, that's it. And then we are continuing negotiations. Both of you have. And for your center, just. Next, negotiations happening. I'm sorry, I'm not going to. Okay, I'm just going to update, um, nothing that's not, really the same committee that we have, but it's, what I've been doing. Wow, still safety waters, this is all, okay, so. So, we're in the summer, it's gathering, and I have several representatives from central department. And one of them was to walk into that, so, so in July, I think this is, I've been with you all of them except for the final of October. So I was going to proceed, and it was primarily principals, myself, and the families, and we need to study this. Um. And, yeah, this is, so, and so, um. Those were very interesting, and things that we focused on, basically, we started in the office to tap on where this is going to be discussed in the system. Which is a work, like, if you want, we follow and ensure that it works. Um, then we moved out and walked around the building, we talked about areas where doors get not open, and. And though you already had a few leaders, it's what they're doing, they're also, they're tied, I don't know, so. There's, um, kind of any try, try, it's, uh, with the technology, but. And so, kind of how we see people to, or the, to, to bring them. And so, um, kind of how we see people, obviously, open up to human rights and putting in, um, use for like, you know, sports teams outside. If he's outside, he's got something like a couple of fifteen bars, electric oil, he's in the bathroom and. Well, that's actually, and then we also talked about scale systems, uh, going to have your, your, your quarters in place, add more families. And then one other thing we talked about is the walking for the fall, which are the things that are a little bit different for the two systems. So, um, we talked about setting up subjects for most part, anything in the industry, in the public, I mean, standards. Uh, on board there, but they wanted to be, it's actually locked and then have, um. Nothing like the right word for this, but there are like magnets or metal plaques that you can put in for, uh, for a game. So we were able to, and hopefully those able to come to town. It was, you know, the way we're willing to pull back these whole buildings. And to block it in the emergency situation. We were just talking about all of those different protocols. Uh, there was a series that actually I constructed, so that we see the S R L list. And with the, with the facility, it's supposed to get all the technical results for school size. Um. We were also offered the option of the, of the ability to use the initial trailer of the police department, uh, active, whatever, active, or primitive trailer. And some situations not available there, and then let everybody keep them up. After we could be sure of that tomorrow. So, um, I didn't think particularly the most good of the active, the one that's the issue. Um. Basically, you know, I'm just, I think what they're thankful for our partnership with both large postsman and all of the new, for hospitals and schools and staff and students. That is specifically been practiced in some of the, you should have been, at least somewhere, to make sure that there's any. Anything with this will never potentially have to start this thing. Um, oh, and the only other thing, one thing that they talked about that they wanted to do with S S. We were okay with this, they liked it, uh, had. Just walk through, like, we, we ran this two whole hours, just to walk through everything, so we made sure that they're coming in with the day out. And just certain level of, of studies with this, for that one song, because we like to see, so. Go ahead, but, but first, right, what I, yeah, so. So, these are just two of them, and actually, we're, so, um. Yeah, it was great, and, so, we should take a year. That was all I had for that. We had these policies, so. Are there any other questions? Any questions about that? Or is it? Yeah, so. That's the case, then we should move on to, and forth, I don't know, the reports. And what you, and have you really told them? Not the, 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 out. Earlier, so first of all, I guess I'm just gonna say. We've been working on this process throughout this whole year and we've gotten a lot of this book to us that have. Only that has, um. The major cause, or we had two work sessions in July, trying to, in the precision, that's made, um, to. Use, actually. By this, to. Was to approve the stock either way, you could have any, Jeff, well, for, of his district operation, but it's just the annual, whatever, of those that align with. Uh, this. And so, this was outcome of our two workshops. And, sorry, the asking, as. I shared this backup to all, just now, um, after we did this last crash. And just, but also if anybody could give us feedback, um. As they were involved in helping, uh, it. I had several emails back, say, thank you for previous, and. Correct, back, it said. Stuff like this, or you really want this, so I have, I don't have any suggestions to me at this point, based on any feedback from staff. And so I just wanted to ask all of you, if you have any other things or any feedback, this isn't the end. Adjustments, what we have. Well, I think it looks great, required, can't they? Uh, the only thing I would consider in my office, I want this. These are the least things, and get a term on this. I mean, exactly, this is our. Topic. So you said. Construction. Final draft, whether there's headers or, or you separate those out into different sections. Oh, I think it would help. It kind of, so. But, that's, it's pretty, that's pretty visual, we're looking at final, we got, it's part of content. I mentioned, I did. And when I like to use. Of course. Um, this is just practically one open point. But I know other comments or suggestions about the belief. One thing that we weren't able to do in some of the work sessions was to kind of within, and that was something that we hadn't really had before. That's a short headline, represents just that one thing. Um, so. And a few of us were thinking about, if that ideas for that, um, but. I was thinking that I was a marketing person, or if I wanted to, it's a big goal input, so.
Do you want me to?
It's my best, for the few things, uh, like what we have so far, what they know of us. So, they should provide us with five ideas, uh, all speed, and. So, to remember, and, and then we'll just, I'll just think about, think about these a little bit as they prepare for our meeting. And I ask everybody, this is the first step in this discussion. And I can tell me that voice, second choice, and third choice, or a single, right? Um, and what they hear us, and you don't have to keep things. What we like and we can, put them to feedback or, so, I don't need to, I took everybody's feedback, or. First choice, I can put the five points. That's what's set, place. On totally. All decided, who comes next? The five, three. So, basically. I would say there were three that were probably the most popular, um. Based on that, like, learning system and how people, the feedback they gave us, future reminders, the focus. I think that's sort of, yeah, and the first one is the education, that's called learning. Was.